Ready? Good evening. This Monday, August 19, 2024, 7:00 p.m., regular meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. The first item on the agenda is 140.25, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is 141.25, Roll Call Attendance. Ms. Heinz, can you take the roll?
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Ms. Heinz, present. Ms. May.
Present.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
President Gray.
Present.
Seven zero. We have everyone here.
Next item on the agenda is 142.25. The board is going to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to 8A of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I support?
Support.
Ms. Heinz, take the roll.
Ms. May.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yep.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
President Gray.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. This motion is adjourned to call. Next item on the agenda is 143.25, Adjournment to an Open Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're back in open session. Before we go any further, I would like to make a motion, and I would like to make a motion to approve the resignation resolution agreement between Wayne Westland Community Schools and Dr. John Dignan as presented to the board. Do I have?
So move.
Support.
All right. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Heinz, if you'd like to call the roll?
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. May.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
President Gray.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is 144.25. And this is, I'm going to take it from you now. Recently, Dr. Fred Weaver was awarded the Michigan Association School Board's Presidential Award. It's the President's Award of Recognition. The MASB President's Award of Recognition is given to school board members who reach the highest level, which is Level 7, of MASB's individual board levels. This includes completing 29 advanced-level classes and 1,383 education credits. I can think of no person greater deserving of recognition for this distinction. What many of you don't know is this year, serving as my Vice President, Dr. Weaver has come with me to almost every meeting I've been in. While I do serve as the President, I am the newest board member up here, and he has been a valuable resource and mentor to me this year. So I would like to congratulate Dr. Weaver on this accomplishment and hope that he continues to get back to this educational community and with his leadership for many more years to come.
No picture.
Just the video camera. We'll do a still shot.
How will we ever remember without a picture? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda? Oh, we are getting one. We are getting one. Here, stand up with your award. I'll stand one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 145.25, Citizens Comment on Agenda Items. Where did those go? Okay. All right. The first person who has turned a sheet, if you haven't filled out a sheet yet for Agenda Items, make sure to fill one out now. If you don't get to it by the time we've moved on to the next item, turn it in anyways, and we'll get to you during the non-Agenda items at the end. The first person is John Ross, who wishes to speak about 150.25. And just as a reminder, speakers will be given three minutes.
Good evening. Was not prepared to speak tonight, so I apologize that I don't have relevant parts of the contract to quote, but I am an elected officer with the WWEA. The role I was elected to is coordinator on Curriculum Council for secondary programs, which includes high school and middle school. The item on the agenda about middle school ELA and science curriculum resources, this is not something that has been acted upon by Curriculum Council, so I wanted the board to be aware that there are processes that are not being followed in this case. I'm not necessarily advocating not to approve this because I am aware the ELA resources, they were presented to Curriculum Council but not acted upon in Curriculum Council. So I can't speak to whether or not there's been teacher voice in these matters. Maybe there has, maybe there hasn't. I don't know because the process hasn't been followed. It hasn't gone through Curriculum Council appropriately in accordance with what is stated in the WWEA contract. Science was not mentioned, to my knowledge. I am seeing that the item being recommended for purchase actually encompasses a variety of content areas. There is also a price tag to it and the fact that it is for two school years, 2024, '25, and '25, '26, to me means it looks more like an adoption rather than just like a short-term type solution. So I wanted the board to have the awareness that there are processes that are not being followed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one we have is Gwen Frettenborough, speaking on 148.25.
Hi, I'm Gwen Frettenborough. I'm just coming to comment on the renewal of the informed K-12. This does not save any of us time. Actually, I was at a conference last week, and if I would have waited for said form to be filled out, I would not have been able to go to the conference. I didn't get approval to go to the conference until the day after the conference actually happened. There were 12 steps that had, no, 11 or 12 steps that had to be followed, and each person had to sign off on it. And I submitted it originally back in June, and I went to the conference in mid-August. So I don't know if this is the best service for conference approval and other things that it has to be used for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that was planning to speak on Agenda Items that I'm missing? All right. Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is 146.25, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Dr. Weaver, do I have support?
Support.
Okay. Do I have any comments on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none. Ms. Heinz, please call the roll.
Ms. May.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
President Gray.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on the agenda is 147.25, Board of Education Committee Reports. First, we have the Property Committee Report. Dr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Trustees held a Property Committee meeting on Wednesday, August 8, 2024, at 11:30 a.m. The Property Committee discussed the following. The Inkster property, which is Blanchett, known as Blanchett, could be ideal for community social services. And indeed, this week, we have a meeting with Higera on Wednesday. The Marshall property has roof leaks, water leaks, and costs associated with the demolition is estimated at $2.68 million. Walker Winter boilers are near the end of life, and the air conditioning is not cooling the building. Discussion of developing a timeline for preparing a bond renewal proposal. There would be no additional costs to stakeholders as this is a renewal of an existing bond with the goal of presenting to the community by November. And we talked about the importance of addressing community concerns and keeping stakeholders informed. The meeting was adjourned at 12:19 p.m. So I do want to say one more thing, Mr. President. The Marshall property, the building at this time, is absolutely, we are unable to do anything with it. If we were, we would need to put about $25 to $26 million into the building just to use it again. So that ship is kind of gone by the wayside as far as that property is concerned. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next, we have the Finance Committee Report. Ms. May?
Thank you. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools met on Thursday, August 8, 2024, beginning at 5:00 p.m. Dr. Weaver and Mr. Neal were present. Dr. Weaver attended the meeting as a substitute for Mr. Gray. Ms. Samara presented Incident IQ and informed K-12 to the committee. Ms. Grove shared information regarding a middle school ELA purchase. Mrs. Campbell recommended to the committee the sale of obsolete two-way radios and buses. Mrs. Campbell presented information regarding the RFP for a construction manager and electrics. Mrs. Campbell also reviewed the General Fund Amendment presentation. Mrs. Campbell reviewed business office reports, including the State Aid Report and School Update, the Investment Report, and the Check Register. Mrs. Curry shared acting superintendent comments, and board members shared closing remarks. The meeting was adjourned at 6:48 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. May. Next item on the agenda is 148.25, Review and Approval Administrative Services. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that Mr. Toko would like to recommend to the board is for the purchase of Incident IQ. As Jacinda Sumaro, Sumara, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the August Finance Committee meeting, Incident IQ is an integrated asset management and help desk system. The integrated asset management portion will enable the district to cross-reference inventory counts and financial records, which will assist with preventing asset loss and theft, also forecast inventory needs and plan for future maintenance. Additionally, the support desk ticketing, along with asset management, enables a complete support experience. The quote provided is pursuant to the inter-local purchasing system, TIPS USA, and was obtained utilizing compliance with Wayne Westland's procurement policies. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Incident IQ at a cost not to exceed $43,730.50, and these costs would be covered by the General Fund. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Support?
Support.
Do we have any comments?
I.
Ms. May?
So I apologize I was not at the Finance Committee meeting. However, I have gone through the minutes, and I did ask to see the technology plan that was in place. And I guess I'm curious or I'm confused because we've purchased some other resources that were meant to support the technology that we were purchasing to do some of the same things that this purchase is making. And so in this plan, I don't see where any of those purchases are listed in terms of resources and how they would do what we're saying we need them to do. So I am concerned with the purchase, and I just don't quite understand the difference between this and some of the other things that we purchased that we said we were using those to monitor devices, to help keep our devices clean, to help make sure we had the devices in stock and how we would get them back, just all these different pieces. So it seems like some things are redundant to me with our purchases. So I don't know if that was discussed at Finance, but that's a question that I have.
Ms. Samara, would you like to speak to that?
Good evening, Board. So we are requesting to purchase Incident IQ because for the past more than 10 years, we have used a system called Resource Manager. Resource Manager is a standalone product that doesn't integrate with our other systems, such as Active Directory or Google Admin. Those are the two systems that we use to actually deploy most of our, basically set up our infrastructure that allows us to deploy things. So by integrating these systems and the help desk, which is actually, hasn't been upgraded in more than 10 years, we will actually be able to provide a fuller structure and a fuller look at what actually is happening in our space. We'll be able to create an IT onboard in partnership with the Office of Human Resources so that when a person onboards, we will know that they're coming. We'll be able to assign technology to the person, not just a room where it might disappear. And then, as the person takes their technology to go do their work, they will be able to, we'll be able to better support them because if a help desk ticket is put in on that device, it will actually connect right to that inventory system. So we'll be able to monitor for the first time not just the devices that we have in our space, but how they move through our environment. So like if a teacher gets transferred from one space to another or one building to another, it actually moves them in the organizational unit. It moves that device to that building. If a help desk ticket is put on, we can actually see that it gets attached right to that inventory record, and so we can see if that's been a problem space, a problem device in our environment. And we can actually provide better forecasting on how many devices we actually need to purchase. We can actually print off when a teacher exits or a student exits how much technology they have checked out, and we can put a system in place to accurately collect that back. And it will just provide for a better overall approach to what's happening. We did spend the last year in conversations with Destiny Follett to try to figure out how to integrate that, the existing system that they've had into our Google Admin and to our Active Directory, and they have not been able to provide us with a solution even though we've invested almost a year into that. The reason for redundancy is that we would have to do a migration. So we can't let go of our old data until we migrate it to a new system. So that is essentially a practice that's in place in technology that when you migrate from one system to another, you sometimes have to overlap them.
Thank you.
And this is Heinz. I just had a quick question. What Gwen had brought to our attention. So was that problem with the IQ or just maybe like was a policy or practice when she couldn't get to the conference?
That was a different software. I'll talk about that. I'll stay here in case you have questions for that, too.
Okay, thank you.
I want to remind members, please wait to be recognized. Ms. Abney Mitchell and then Mr. Cox.
I was just going to say, but you explained most of what we was using now. And so you saying that the technology that we are using present and as it, the subscriptions aspire and we renew them, we need those subscriptions plus this new to merge together. And that's why it's overlapping and.
And in the future, we wouldn't purchase the other system moving forward.
So how far in the future are we? When we, if we approve this purchase now, can you tell us what's needed to connect? What are the subscriptions that we need to make this purchase work?
So we've already purchased Destiny Follett. That was a resource offered by Wayne Reesaw that does not meet our needs right now. And so we would not purchase that in the future. We purchased it this year knowing that if we did a migration, we would need all of our extant data to be able to bring that forward.
So what are we doing with that that we not using no more?
Well, we'll still be using that for our library, our media centers for library book checkout because that's not a technology asset.
But you understand that the situation that we in and add more technology because we need it right now and is at a cost, and this cost is coming out the General Fund?
I understand that. I would.
So what can you do as a department head to like mitigate some of this cost?
Okay. Prevention, loss prevention and better tracking of our devices in our environment. I firmly believe that will save us more than the cost of this software annually at this point, based on data that I've reviewed.
And loss prevention is from students leaving and staff leaving?
Yes.
So it couldn't be a situation where their paycheck is held up? Do they turn in a device or?
I'm not going to speak to that. That's outside of my sphere of influence.
I'm just thinking that a $43,000, $1,000,000 device, I mean, you know, I'm just thinking about the cost.
So when we.
Just ways that we can speak about.
So when we deployed the bond, I'll, first I'll say I was not in this seat at this time. When we deployed the bond technologies, we placed laptops into classrooms the same way we would have placed desktops into classrooms. However, we know as users of technology that if you have a laptop and you have a desktop, it has a very different use case. Your laptop goes with you to the library. It goes with you to Starbucks. It goes with you on vacation. While if you have a desktop or a tower, it's sitting at home, maybe in a room of choosing in your house. And that is exactly what has happened here. As a teacher has come into a classroom, they have actually picked up that laptop. Many have decorated them with stickers, and they have, they move them with them if their job is changed or whatnot. So now what's happening when a new teacher arrives in those spaces, there's not a computer for them.
Right. Yeah. I understand.
And so this would allow us to better track where our devices are, assign the devices to humans, and follow, and follow the device as the human has their experience here at Wayne Westland, whether that be a five-year career or a 35-year career where we have to refresh their device through time. This will allow us to really track and provide that one-to-one service that will better support teaching and learning here at Wayne Westland.
I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Cox, then Ms. May again.
Thank you, President Gray. I just wanted to comment. You've kind of mentioned that this is a $43,000 cost, but I'm sure if you estimated the cost and the value of the technology that we've lost through, it just happens when you've got 10,000 pieces out.
We have far more than 10,000 pieces in our environment. We're probably closer to 20,000 devices in our environment.
Yeah. And so, and currently, we do not have any good way, any effective way to track these devices. So this would allow us, we've been buying devices for a long time.
I'll give you one example. So the way that Destiny Follett Resource Manager was set up in the district, because it's only for schools, Dyer is actually not in asset managed, is not currently asset managed. And some of our most expensive computers in our district belong in this building.
Ms. May, I believe you have another question?
Not so much a question, just a comment. I just wanted to thank Ms. Samara because I did ask you, I think, two months ago at the last, two meetings ago about a technology plan. So thank you for that, for providing that. And thank you for your work with this. I am just, in this particular climate that we're in right now, I just don't know that this is the purchase we need to make at this moment. I am concerned. I recognize that many of the devices that we've purchased are grant-funded purchases. So I would hope that due to compliance pieces that we have an inventory setup. And if we don't, we need to. But it doesn't necessarily have to be this to get it set up. But I do appreciate your work and what you're bringing forth, and not to say that this isn't something we don't need later when we're in a better situation. But until we can get our finances in order, I just can't support this purchase at this time.
I did talk to Ms. Polikovich, per your request, to see if there were grant funds available to support infrastructure technology at this point, and there really aren't, other than E-Rate, which obviously is a communications grant available to us that will come and visit you in the near future, I hope. And that would be a more, a broader, more infrastructure piece for something more like fiber.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Ms. Haye?
Just one last thing. Would you take the time to give a better example of just how much we've lost? How much has disappeared? The value of what we don't know? And so we have an idea of exactly what we're comparing here, the $43,000 against what that we don't know where it is and it's gone.
I'm afraid to hear this.
I'm afraid to say it in public.
Yeah. But with no way of tracking it?
With no way of tracking, it's hard to really estimate how much we have lost. But I can tell you from watching this for my first year, Dr. Ophelia, about how many people have retired or left the district this year. Teachers. Fifty? I don't know where those 50 devices are in our environment. There's already $50,000.
Well, but.
But that sounds like we.
Yeah, before we say that's 50,000, are you sure that none of them have been returned?
I'm not, I'm just saying.
Okay.
I don't know where they are in our environment to be able to redeploy them.
Right, but we can't put a dollar amount on not knowing where they are. But I'm just saying that we can't do a one-to-one dollar amount on when we don't.
We would have to do depreciation, but high level, that was essentially $50,000 worth of purchase that I can't redeploy, and I can't tell you where it is. And I didn't even necessarily get a chance to make a concentrated and very diligent effort to get that stuff back because I didn't have a, everything wasn't connected. Help, like where, if we got a help desk ticket that says this person is leaving the environment, we would print, we'd be able to pull up their technology and let the people know this is the technology we have, and I could actually deploy a staff member from my team to do an exit, an off-board. Let's go collect your tech. Any questions? Want to take good care of you. We are really glad that you worked at Wayne Westland, and we hope that you have a bright future.
Ms. Heinz, and then I think Mr. Cox had another, and then Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. We had COVID. I know we had the one-on-one, and we had some of the parents. We have a high transient, you know, rate in the district with the kids. Like with the process, you know, we have them fill out the paperwork. Like how do we recover? Like, how do we recover? Just sometimes it's a loss when they leave the district.
Yep. It's just a lot, many of these are a loss when they leave the district. Um, there are several hundred Chromebooks that are just missing from that one-to-one. I would actually put it in the thousands, several thousand left, um, Chromebooks that are just missing from that initiative. Um, we were able to, um, use some ESR funds to try to close that gap this year. We're looking, um, and I've been working with the Executive Directors of Curriculum on redef, re, re, redefining our one-to-one initiative. It might look a little different, especially at the middle school level this year. One of our middle schools had near fifty percent breakage rate this year. Um, so, it is, it is a, and then the one-to-one initiative is a, is a challenge right now in our space.
Is there where we put some type of tracking devices or something in the system? Like a Find My Phone or some, you know, something that we can track these missing devices through technology? Or this additional cost?
That is not something that we have available to us in the way we're set up currently. Um, I'll give you another example. Through the E-Rate, um, ECF Grant, like the Electronic Connectivity Fund, we deployed, again before me, fifty-five hundred Apple iPads into the environment. Um, and this year, knowing we were at the end of the connectivity part, um, we did some diligent work in partnership with, um, Office of Curriculum and our Building Principals to try to get back as many of those as we could. We got back less than one-third of them. Um, and while we were able to put those, um, repair those and get those ready to redeploy, um, we have three thousand other Chrome, um, iPads that are out there that, um, are, are, are not, they're bricked, they can't be used at all, but they're not coming back. Like, they actually have a, a block command on them that says, please return this device to Wayne Westland Schools. That's the best you can do with that iPad right now, unless, of course, you do something illegal with it. Um, and they're not coming back even as, even bricked.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox, and then I believe Ms. Abney Mitchell, did you?
Thank you. Um, I ask an additional question, not so much because of the forty-three thousand dollars, because I know that we're going to discontinue a program we're currently purchasing in order to have this. My question is, are you absolutely confident that purchasing this is going to give us some control over these devices? And are there other programs, are there other vendors offering similar opportunities? Do other school districts in the, in the area use this particular program?
Yep. So, I have done a, a bit of work in my department this year, um, or the past year, um, where I really tried to differentiate and grow the talent on my team. And this was actually one of our first projects where I allowed a team member to really lead this work. Um, and so, a part, a pair of team members really sat down and wrote out all of our specs on what we really needed to be able to do in our space. Um, they researched, um, options, they saw what was available on bid lists. They did, they had vendor presentations, they talked with, um, uh, the districts that use the technologies, and they actually made this recommendation that this is what they, as a tech team, feel would allow them to better serve the community and to better track our devices. So, I really was proud of their work, that they took this initiative, um, that they've had this opportunity to grow. And, um, I sat in the final presentations, and I will say this one was the one that it really blew me away. I do know that this is used by Ypsilanti Public Schools, um, if you wanted to reach out to them and ask some questions.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
And I don't say this to knock no staff or put no staff down, but based on, you know, with the devices, as you said, that, you know, you don't know if they are accounted for on the property or not. That's a stocking issue. And also, as far as the kids returning them, you know, that, that's a staff issue, checking that stuff in and making sure it's returned. My granddaughter graduated over the summer from, um, from, um, the Virtual Academy, Innovation Academy, and she could not get her high school diploma, and she, to, from here, from John Glenn, until she turned in her laptop. So, it's basically staff doing their job and doing what they supposed to do. And even with this forty-three thousand dollar tool, if the staff is not doing the job, it serves no purpose.
I, I will be clear that the forty-three thousand is because this year is the stand-up year. Moving forward, it would cost the same, uh, about the same, marginally different, um, as what it would cost to continue to use a resource manager that isn't serving our needs at all.
And if I offended any staff, I do apologize.
So, I just have one last follow-up question. So, we already have devices deployed to students, correct? That we're not able to track?
So, we have, so we did, I'll give you one examples. To try to get my head around the inventory and what was lost and broken, we did an all-call at the high schools and middle schools to have as many kids bring their devices back as possible. Um, we inventoried them this summer. That's how we, I know that the, like, the breakage rate at one middle school is, um, higher than, uh, we'll say, national levels. Um, and, um, based on that, I knew we were going to be short the number of student devices that we need to deploy. And that's when, um, Ms. Polikovich and I came back in the July board meeting, I believe it was, to request that we use some ESR monies to close that gap for these, these, these next couple of years.
So, where I was going with my question is, do you need the devices in hand in order to have them linked to this purchase?
We'll, we will actually be able to take the inventory that we got back and, um, scan those in, and then they'll become part of this before we redeploy them. Um, or even if we do deploy them this year, we'll be able to do the migration from the old system to the new system. So, that will help us kind of close that. Um, I'm not as worried about going backwards at this point to try to find what, I have no idea where it is. My goal is that we will move forward and that we will be able to better, um, serve our community moving forward. And to better give you, but to be able to better give you numbers and to better give you data so that you can make the decisions that you need to make with data on the table, not just, um, Ms. Mara said so.
Thank you.
Mr. Neil?
Yeah, I just wanted you to know that I'll be in support of this, uh, because I see, as you've already described, there is an offset. I know there's an overlap of two programs until you transfer the information, but there is an offset after which we'll pay about the same amount. And I don't see how we can ask you to keep track of twenty thousand devices without a method that allows you to do that job. So, I will be in support of it.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Oh, no, we already did that.
Roll call vote. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have one, two, three, four, five yeses and two no's.
All right, next item on the agenda, oh. Next, we have another recommendation by Ms. Campbell.
Yes, so, the second and last recommendation from Mr. Toko is a recommendation to renew the Informed K-12 License. As Ms. Mara, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the August Finance Committee Meeting, Informed K-12 is an online form license. The district-wide level license supports up to a hundred processes, unlimited form submissions, and unlimited user accounts. Informed K-12 supports the district process by expeditiously and correctly routing forms for approval through the district electronically. Informed K-12 is a sole-source product manufactured, sold, and distributed exclusively by Emix Incorporated, doing business as informed K-12. He recommends that the Board of Education approve the renewal of informed K-12 at a cost not to exceed twenty-six thousand five hundred eleven dollars and ninety-two cents to cover the time period of December first, 2024, through June thirtieth, 2025. And this purchase would be covered by the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Do I have support? Support. All right. Any, uh, comments?
One question.
Ms. Hines?
Ms. Campbell, um, so this was included in the budget, right? Like, okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, and just to clarify, you said December this is, goes into effect?
Yes.
Okay, because I just do want to remind that, uh, we did renew this last winter.
Yeah.
That was a top of concern, that we brought to the administration, that we felt it was thrown at us at the last minute, and that we didn't have much choice, because it would have caused chaos if we didn't approve. So, I do want to thank, uh, the administration for bringing this to us further in advance this time. Uh, Mr. Cox?
It dawns on me, especially after the previous conversation, um, you know, Gwen got up and said, it doesn't work. And, and, uh, and either does the program that we purchased through Risa to track our equipment, which we spent, I don't know, forty thousand on. My, my feeling is, uh, how does it not work? Is there something that meets our needs better than this? I, I don't know that it didn't work.
Well...
It, does it need to be decided tonight? Can we get more information on it before we vote?
Well, I don't know about that piece. I suppose since it renews in December, we could postpone it. But I can tell you that the reason that the previous, um, Gwen Frettenborough had problems with it is probably because she said she submitted it in June, and then everybody leaves for the summer and doesn't check the, and to go through, to go through that many processes or that many approvals, it probably was grant-funded, because it's unusual to have that many, um, stops in the process, unless it's grant-funded. So, yes, there is the potential for that to fall through the cracks, because there are many, many staff members who aren't required to check email during summer break.
Well, that's an excellent, I've never heard anybody say anything bad about this so far.
I can tell you from a business, from a business standpoint, we've got, we've got, um, it's, it's a time saver, forms don't get lost in the mail. Um, I understand that we had this, this situation where it was held up for a couple of months, but, um...
Yeah, but everybody's gone.
That's the reason why.
Yeah.
And typically, things can move through in a day, through several approval processes. They can.
Any other comments? Yeah, and so, just to clarify, so what it sounds like, I'm not saying that it's working perfectly, but the way it's not working doesn't seem to be in, um, a software-related issue. It seems to be a human-related issue from the people operating it, which we would likely have that issue if we went back to paper approvals or if we went to any other service, because at the end of the day, any service we use, right, somebody has to click a button to make it work, you know, to, to the next level. If people aren't doing that in a timely manner, that is a human issue.
Yes. And with, if we go back to paper, someone's got to be at the desk. Someone's got to carry the mail from one building to the other. With informed K-12, if we were to hypothetically, if we required staff who don't work over the summer to monitor their email, that wouldn't happen.
So, I, just that being said, that I do plan to support this, but with the caveat that, uh, we should be, look at our processes maybe to make sure that, uh, the human side of it that goes, catches up with the software side of it. Any other comments? Seeing none, Ms. Hines, please take the roll.
Mr. Cox?
Uh, no.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Neil?
No.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
President Gray?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four no's, and one, two, three yeses, motion fails.
All right. Next item on the agenda is one forty-nine point two-five, Review and Approval of Business Service and Finance. Ms. Campbell?
Can I ask a question about the previous motion? Um, is that a final, or does that bring back more information for a later vote?
You're welcome to present it before the board again if you're, can feel that you can satisfy some of the concerns the board have.
Okay, I will let Mr. Toko know that.
For, for me, that's, that's what I want to see. I just want to see that.
Okay.
So, I was going to say, I just wanted to clarify, so I would like to see the process. Like, what, how many steps, and was, how are we gonna not have this happen again? So, because you're, you said, people don't, aren't required to check their email in the summer, which I understand that. But it's the same as people don't have to, we would need people to be here to deliver the mail in the summer, right? So, what happens in the summer when there is a, when people are on vacation? And then what's the expected turnaround time, right? So, if somebody submits a K-12 form for a conference or whatever we're using it for, and I'd like to know what all we're using it for, then what is the expected turnaround time for them to get a response? That would be information I would like to see.
Okay.
Okay.
I would pass that on.
All right. Next item on the agenda, one forty-nine point two-five, Review and Approval of Business Service and Finance.
All right. So, um, if I can have the Communications Department put the budget presentation on the screen? Thank you. So, typically, um, a First Amendment would be done in mid-year, but because we have so many moving parts and changes to our financial situation after the board approved the original amendment, um, we're doing an August amendment, um, and then we will do another amendment in January, since there are so many ongoing changes. So, some of the recent happenings, um, I will just echo what has already been said here. Last year, in fiscal year twenty-four, Wayne Westland Community Schools was overpaid three point three million dollars from state aid due to an error from the Wayne County Treasurer's Office in reporting taxable values in the municipality or the township of Canton. So, initially, when the state reached out to us, that three point three million was supposed to be paid back to the state all in fiscal year twenty-four, being withheld in equal installments for the remaining of, uh, four months of our state aid payments. After several conversations with MDE, Department of Treasury, and after the board approved the year-end budget for fiscal year twenty-four, the state actually agreed to extend our payback period to five years. So, now, what that means is now we will pay equal amounts of payback in the years fiscal year twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-eight, instead of paying all of it back in fiscal year twenty-four. This means that six hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year will be spread out over our state aid payments. We get eleven state aid payments every year, every month except for September. Additional recent happenings. Uh, I asked the state if we were allowed to amend that fiscal year twenty-four final budget, and I was told, no, we can't amend that at this point. It's too late to do that. So, they're going to allow us to, um, put the true-up of what all that means into an adjustment in our budget amendment, our first budget amendment for this year. So, anticipated change to the ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four by adding back that three point three million and then just taking back or just deducting the six hundred and sixty thousand for that year, which is one-fifth of the total payback, um, will actually increase our fund balance. So, we have an additional two point six four million dollars in ending fund balance, which will bring our estimated ending fund balance from three point six million or two point four percent up to six point two four million or four point two percent. If we bring that six point two four percent into the fiscal year twenty-five first budget amendment, oh, we will bring that as our estimated beginning fund balance. Also, another thing that happened, or that's changing, is we're doing a true-up of the Act eighteen impact to the fiscal year twenty-five general fund, fund modification. One thing that surprised us is the state budget, um, did not give school districts an increase in their per pupil allowance. They made a lot of changes to a lot of other categoricals. But we originally budgeted an estimated state aid membership of nine thousand one hundred and fifty students and an estimated foundation allowance of nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars per student. And we did that because we took the governor, the House, and the state, uh, of...
Proposals.
Proposal, proposed budgets, um, and averaged their per pupil allowance increase, um, and came up with two hundred and forty-eight dollars per pupil. That's usually a safe estimation. So, it was very much a surprise that we didn't get an increase in our pupil allowance. So, our amended budget, um, taking into account no increase, we're still estimating our state aid membership or our enrollment to be nine thousand one hundred and fifty, but we are backing down our foundation allowance to nine thousand six hundred and eight dollars per pupil, which is what it current, or what it was in fiscal year twenty-four. So, that takes our originally budgeted foundation allowance from ninety million down to eighty-seven point nine million, which is a difference of two point two six nine million, um, or a decrease in our estimation. So, this is, um, the next several slides, I think six slides, are giving a look at the state budget impact. So, this list was published, um, it's a conference report from the State Fiscal Agency. It's a list of all the different categoricals that the state gives to schools and ISDs. Wayne Westland Community Schools does not get all of these different categoricals of funding. So, what I did is I went through and I highlighted those categoricals that impact our district. So, if it's not highlighted on the sheet, it's no impact to us. So if it's not highlighted on the sheet, it's no impact to us. We don't receive that money. If it's highlighted in blue, then it's a, then the state is decreasing the amount of that categorical. If it's highlighted in yellow, there's no change, and if it's highlighted in pink, they're actually increasing that categorical. This spreadsheet actually tells the entire state's increase or decrease. It doesn't show what the actual dollar impact is going to be for Wayne Westland Community Schools, and I won't know that until our first state aid payment for the new year, which is in October. So what I did is I took the percentage of change for the entire state budget, and I applied that to our numbers to get an estimate of what the impact is going to be for Wayne Westland. So if you look at, um, the first highlight in blue, 22A and 22B, these are our proposal A and discretionary payments. The state is decreasing both of those fun, funding methods. The 22A or proposal A, they're decreasing by 3.76%. And the 22B or discretionary payment, they're decreasing by .062%. The yellow highlight is 27L, I'm sorry, 22L. Hit the wrong glasses. Um, transportation costs, there's no change to that, so our, um, categorical revenue for that should stay the same. Yes, L. Educator Compensation Program, they're eliminating that entirely, decrease of 100% of that, uh, source of funding.
And what was that again? I'm sorry.
That is the blue highlight at the bottom there, the 27L Educator Compensation Program. They're eliminating that.
I have a quick question, Julie.
So as you showed the differences, and I know you said you just took the difference between the previous year and then the reduction, right?
But that doesn't mean, so like, for example, 22A, and you said it was reduced by .0376, but that does not necessarily mean that that's the percentage that we were reduced by.
Not necessarily, because a lot of these categoricals are dependent upon your free and reduced and things like that. And so, until we get our first state aid payment, I don't know what the exact impact for Wayne Westland will be. The best I could do is apply the same percentage of the overall state budget to our situation. So if we move on to the next page, the first yellow highlight is Section 29, Enrollment Stabilization, and we do receive that, and there's no change in the state budget. The pink highlighted 31A At-Risk Pupil Support, they're increasing by 8.71%. And that is, that is restricted. We use that for at-risk purposes. The next three yellow items are related to school lunch, so they don't actually impact the general fund, but, um, they impact the food service fund, and those are all staying the same. The school lunch programs, the school, uh, breakfast programs. School lunch, we get federal and state money from the state for those. No change. The next one in blue is 31J. It's the 10 Cents a Meal Grant. That's being, um, reduced by 51.6%. That's also an impact to the cafeteria fund, not the general fund. Then the 31AA, which was a new categorical for us for mental health and school safety, um, they're reducing that by 91, 92%, essentially, 91.92%. The next pink one is Great Start, um, or GSRP, 32D. They're actually increasing that by 15.66%. And then the blue down at the bottom is 35A5, and they're eliminating that, so it's a reduction of 100% of that categorical.
And what is that one?
That one is, I believe it's a literacy. It's the early, yeah, it's the early literacy district grant.
Yeah, I couldn't see it on my sheet, okay. They're reducing that by 100%.
Yeah, they're eliminating that one.
It doesn't show that elimination in here.
It, well, what, what they did with that categorical is, when they rolled it over to the fiscal year '25, they changed it from 35A4 to 35A5.
So, is that literacy and math?
No, it's just, I tried to put my highlight in between the two lines because they changed one character of the categorical, or the section code.
So which one is she trying to, oh, so is it early literacy?
Yes.
Okay, yes, because I was looking at the one funded, and you got math, okay.
Yeah, I tried to highlight, like, in between those two lines.
We can eat, our kids can eat, but they can't read.
Yeah. Okay, so the next page, um, the 35J, which was Professional Development Curriculum and Supports, they're eliminating, so that's going away, 100% reduction.
Question. What does this, what does this mean for professional development in our district and for purchasing curriculum?
Well, it just means that we don't have a supplement when we spend that money.
So we're gonna have to purchase out of the general fund?
It, and I think it actually depends on what the PD is. There may be other grants that cover some of that PD. Um, we just won't have this specific funding anymore.
All right, thank you.
The next line that's, um, pink, 41, Section 41, is our Bilingual Education Supports, and that actually is being increased by 26.2%. The next one, 51C, is our Special Education Headley, the state share. They're increasing that by 12.73%. The first, or the next blue highlight is 61A, and that is money for vocational education, or our CTE program. They're reducing by 16.89%. The next one is 61C, the CTE Equipment Grant, that has been in place for quite a while. They're eliminating that completely. The pink one, 61D, CTE Incentive Payments, they're increasing by 6.1%. Which is actually not a very large amount to begin with, but, um, okay, next page. The 67F categorical is the FAFSA Completion Grant. That's staying the same. That's all we get on this page. And on the next page, 9, 99B, Computer Science Professional Learning, code.org, they are decreasing by 87.5%. The 99G, Women Helping Period, was new this past year. That's staying the same. We're getting the same funding in that categorical. Robotics, 99H, they're reducing by 20.93%. 99U was Imagine Learning. They're reducing by 100%, eliminating that totally, so we won't be, uh, using Imagine Learning anymore. And 99II was the Wayne Westland Drivers Training Pilot Program Grant. That was a one-year funding source. They're eliminating that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I thought it was a couple of years.
Well, we get to-
I know, we was doing a pilot.
We received all the money in fiscal year '24, and the actual activity to use that money is ongoing.
Oh, so we still have people, students available to take the course? Have those students been identified already?
Ms. Mitter? Sure.
Thanks.
Good evening. Uh, the first, so we received that funding, and the first cohort started this summer and is wrapping up now, and then we will start a new cohort in September. Um, I'm actually have a meeting tomorrow with All-Star Driver Education to plan out the school year when those cohorts will run.
So how many cohorts are we expecting to have?
It really will depend on the class size. I believe it's 25 students max that they can have in each group. That's a state law.
Okay, so we haven't figured out how many students is gonna be able to go through the program? Is the question that we had?
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak on this tonight, so I, it's just over 300 students. Because they have to do segment ones, one, two, and then the road test.
Right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
We do anticipate using all that.
Oh, absolutely.
Entire 250,000.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Mitter.
And thank you for always being prepared.
And, uh, the last page, excuse me, of this report is, so 104H, next year, or this, they called it 104H in the past. This year it's 104I. This is Benchmark Assessments for fiscal year, and this is the money that helps us pay for that NWEA. They're reducing that by 2.77%. The yellow highlight, 14781, the MIPSers District Reimbursement, is staying the same. The next line that doesn't really show up very well on the presentation, but is pink, 14782, MIPSers Normal Cost for Lower AROR Dedicated Gains. They're increasing that by 1.26%. The next pink line, 147E, is MIPSers Additional Normal DC Costs for PA 82 of 2017. They're increasing by 15.82%. And the 147F, MIPSers Additional District Reimbursements, they're eliminating completely, reducing by 100%. So, um, all those little changes, um, impact our categoricals. Most of the money that we're seeing an increase in is restricted, um, as opposed to if they had given us the foundation allowance, that would be unrestricted funds. So it, it kind of presents a challenge to districts, um, but all those are incorporated into the budget amendment for August. The next slide is, um, a showing of positions eliminated in the general fund to date, which is not today, but it's when I prepared this presentation, so it was a week ago. If you look at the headers, about two-thirds across the page, there's one that says GF, and that's the column that shows the savings to the general fund for the eliminated position that is in the far-left column. If you look down at the bottom, there's a total of savings to the general fund of $2,357,926, just based on this list, and actually, this list is ever-changing and, uh, will be updated in the January second budget amendment. So this is a look at the actual, um, budget amendment, and I did break it out. Revenues on one slide with notes, and expenditures are on the next slide with notes. And I, the shading is just to help, um, determine the line, keep track of which line we're on. But as you can see, um, there would be an increase to local revenue, and the notes, or major areas of change, are changes to tax revenue, Medicaid, and interest income. State revenue, um, we're predicting a decrease of about $3 million. That, um, is the impact of that final state budget on all those changes. It also includes the property tax error spread of $660,000 for the fiscal year. Um, the next line is also state revenue, and that's the prior-year adjustment where we're adding back in the $2,640,000, um, based on the recalculation of our payback, uh, overpayment of state aid. Another thing that's changing is other funding sources, and that is due to Enhancement Millage, which is also based on property values in the county, and Act 18 adjustments, and independent para reimbursements. Then fund modifications, the change to that, um, is due to indirect cost recoveries from grants in food service, and that's actually going to be a decrease because we're seeing some of our grants expire. So, um, the total amended revenue is projected to be actually an increase to $149,835,445. Add that to the beginning fund balance. Wrong slide, but what I talked about before, we're, we're actually amending our projected beginning fund balance from 3.6 million to 6.241 million. And I don't know if that's what you have on paper, or if you have the old copy. Okay, I'll get those distributed. Um, so we would end up with a total available to appropriate of $156,76,471.
Did you say 156 or 153?
156, oh, 76, 471, available to appropriate.
Will we get a hard copy of the-
Yes, I'll make sure that you do.
Okay, so what we have is incorrect, right?
Yes, it is. I'm very sorry about that.
That's okay.
And do that include the, um, the loan that we borrowed?
No, the loan is actually not something that shows up as revenue, because we're going to have to repay it. It's just cash that's gonna sit on our balance sheet.
Okay.
Um, to get us through, um, payroll until our state aid starts rolling in again. So you won't see that as a revenue expenditure.
These funds are available now, or yes, or this is the-
Well, this is the budget.
This is the budget for 2024 to '25?
Yes, the amended budget as of right now.
And I'm missing that sheet right there, but if we're gonna get a hard copy.
You're missing the expenditures?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's okay if we're gonna get a hard copy.
Okay. Um, okay, so we're talking about expenditures, and we're gonna see a change in, um, the Instruction Section in the Added Needs Function, and that's due to, um, the termination or retirement of a virtual teacher. And moving down to Support Services, we're going to have a change in our instructional support staff. It's a reduction in expenditure, and that is due to the Director of Secondary Support Services, Director of State and Federal Grants, ML Liaison is going to be, um, covered by a grant, and secondary curriculum, and it's cut off. I don't know what that last word was. If we look at School Administration, as a reminder, that is Office of the Principal in school buildings, and that is going to see a reduction due to the fact that- in school buildings, and that is going to see a reduction due to the fact that we reduced Assistant Principals at Wia, Woodland Meadows and John Glenn, not Woodland Meadows, Wayne Memorial and John Glenn, Wildwood, and a principal mentor. And actually, after this presentation was put together, the Wayne Memorial, John Glenn, Assistant Principal is actually going to be a savings now, not in that position, but in special projects, support, I think, behavior specialists, if I'm not mistaken. Moving on to operations and maintenance, that reduction is the retirement of the Executive Director of Maintenance and Operations. Transportation is going to see a reduction in expenditures based on the resignation of a supervisor in transportation that isn't being backfilled. Central Services is going to see a reduction, and that is due to the Director of Community Partnerships and Outreach and a director, one of the Directors of Technology being collapsed. And then Support Services, you'll see a reduction in expenditures due to Strength and Conditioning Coordinator collapse and resignation. Then Fund Modifications, you'll see an increase in expenditures due to a true-up of the budgeted state aid for Act 18 transfer. That comes to a total expenditures of $160,188,313, which is a decrease from the original budget, and leaving an estimated fund balance with the change I spoke of in the revenue of actually a negative $4,111,842, or negative 2.57 percent. Any questions? And I will make sure that hard copies are distributed of the amended amendment.
Is there anything, is there anything that's currently still not reflected that?
Yes. Anything that's happened in the last week and a half after this presentation was put together, and, well, two weeks, because this went to finance first, before it came to the board meeting. So all the changes that have happened after that will be reflected in the January amendment.
Okay, okay. Do we have an estimate, and I know that you were going to speak to some of this stuff in your comments, but do we have an estimate about so far what that is?
I do not have that information yet.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? Do just want to point out the, I was mistaken, I didn't believe we were actually being asked to vote on something tonight. I didn't see it on the second line, thought this was just informational. But since it is, the next item is recommendation to adopt. I do have a concern because the resolution that is in our packet still has the incorrect numbers, so.
Ms. Markey is printing those for you, the hard copies, right now. And I will just add that the next item is the resolution to approve the deficit elimination plan.
Oh.
And the budget amendment has to be approved before I submit that, and that's due on I mean, the board doesn't have to approve it, I would just go back to the original.
Sure, sure. Is that any good, Joe?
Well, I'm sorry, but not having the correct information available. I learn by looking at something, researching it, and looking over again. And for us, just getting the correct information, you know, we have, Dr. Weaver has asked our CFO several times, you know, do she need any assistance or anything? Because things are just so demanding right now. We had to come in a couple of weeks ago for a special meeting because things was not done correctly, and you know, it's just the checks and balances that I'm concerned about. And you know, we had to, we had to approve this now because it's needed by the 22nd. Today is the 19th.
Can I ask a question, though? So if it's not approved, we just use the previously adopted one, but that's for this initial deficit elimination plan. We do submit updated deficit elimination plans throughout the process, right?
Yes.
So worst-case scenario, if we vote this one down today, we use the original adopted budget, and after we get more information and everything and adopt a new one, we can still then update that deficit elimination plan after that.
Well, when is we going to stop looking like we don't know what we doing in our finances?
No, I just was clarifying that we do not have to adopt this tonight if we don't feel comfortable. It is not going to actually change anything in the way we're proceeding if we do not adopt this tonight, right? We can, so.
So I know you're getting ready to present the deficit elimination plan. Are those numbers current, or are those numbers from two weeks ago?
Those numbers are from two weeks ago because they have to match the latest amendment that's been approved by the board.
I have a question. But then if we don't approve it, then you have to redo that amendment, that plan.
The deficit elimination plan, yes.
Okay. Because this is, this is, I'm disappointed. I am thoroughly confused sitting here, and I just have to express that. It's, I really just don't know what's going on. I really don't.
Dr. Weaver?
My question, Ms. Campbell, is, is there anything that is in the original budget if we don't approve this tonight that's going to catch us unawares?
I love it.
You know, for example, some months ago, that budget was turned over without a second look. That was before your time, and all of a sudden, we were $16 million in the hole. So I'm asking, is there anything in the original budget that's going to catch us by surprise?
Well, the original budget has none of the changes that have happened since then and that are part of the amendment.
Okay. I do just want to clarify before you answer, this is just an update to the sheet form, though we need an updated actual resolution that Ms. Heinz will sign.
So may I ask the follow-up question? Not about that.
District resolution.
Just trying to figure that out. So, and Mrs. Campbell, in here, and wait, let me go back, maybe it's not in here. No. So did we move the multilingual liaison to a grant, or did we eliminate that position? Because I thought we just voted to eliminate that position in the consent agenda. So we did eliminate, it's not going to a grant.
There was one within that, there was a coach that was displaced, but that position is up for termination the 30th, or the December 20th.
So this is not accurate, what's listed here in terms of, we did not move anybody to a grant? So on the page, the final page, where it's speaking of pupil support, and it has ML Liaison to a grant?
So moved to grant till December 20th. Last year was fully funded in general fund.
Okay.
Now moved to grant, but then it's December 20th.
It's, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neal.
We've discussed this in the past about voting or not voting, and transparency and other issues related to it. This is not an emergency. So, you know, based on our past discussions, in order for us to be consistent with our own decisions, this should not be voted on until another meeting has gone by. The next meeting.
But you need it on the 22nd.
Unless it's an emergency, but this is not an emergency.
Ms. May?
So I know we're having a conversation, and I don't even know if this is the appropriate time or not, but I would like to make a motion that we suspend our Finance Committee meetings and have them become board workshops so that all board members can attend, and we're not just three board members sitting and trying to get this information. We can truly have a board workshop to work through this until we are out of this situation.
We have to dispose of the motion, though, on the first, so we'll come back.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments as far as the? I'm going to actually second what Mr. Neal said there, and given the questions around it and the fact that we did have in the past said that we would like to, you know, get two sets of eyes, you know, take a look at this at least over two meetings, with the first and second read, I'm going to make a motion to table this item.
Support.
Do we have any comments on that? All right.
Ms. Heinz?
Take a roll call.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
And then.
The deficit elimination plan is no longer valid, so I don't know, I mean, I've got to rewrite it at this point. So I don't know if we should.
The deficit elimination, elimination. I'm sorry. Mr. Cox?
I'm just saying, call for a motion, let it die.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Okay, the next. How long will you, do you think it will take you to update the deficit elimination plan? Do you use any old numbers?
End of week.
Okay, and when does it do?
22nd.
Well, yeah, Thursday. I'll have it done by Thursday.
Is it due on Thursday?
The 22nd.
Okay. It's due on Thursday. Do they grant any sort of extensions?
I don't know. I'm going to call them tomorrow.
Because otherwise, we will need to set up a meeting then for Thursday to vote on this.
Before Thursday.
Before Thursday, yeah. We will need, so yes, we'll need this done by Wednesday and at the very latest. Okay. So yes, the motion to let it die, is that what it is for the next?
No, I'm just, you're going to call for a motion. Probably no one's going to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the deficit elimination plan? Seeing no motion. Next item is, oh, no, we still have another item for you, for me, Ms. Campbell.
The next item is a recommendation to sell obsolete two-way radios. Wayne Westland Community Schools is in possession of 70 two-way radios that were once in our buses but have been replaced. The district would like to sell these obsolete radios through our CIS auctions. The letter of request from Dandrian Supervisor of Garage Operations is included in your board packet. The radios, these questions were posed to me in the Finance Committee meeting. The radios originally cost about $800 apiece when they were brand-new, and the reason they're being replaced, or the reason they were replaced is the former Executive Director of Maintenance and Operations received a grant that paid for new radios for the buses and the school buildings that are all compatible, have many more features, better sound quality, and all interact with each other and also are in buildings, same frequency, same radios. So I recommend that the Board of Education approves the sale of these radios through CIS auctions as requested.
Move approval.
The auction, what?
I move approval.
Okay.
Do you have support?
Support.
All right, any comments? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Heinz, roll call.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
And the last item that I have for the board today is recommendation to sell obsolete buses. Wayne Westland Community Schools recently purchased 10 buses as part of the current voter-approved bond. As a result, we decommissioned 11 of our oldest buses that are no longer roadworthy. The district would like to sell these decommissioned buses through CIS auction, and a list of these buses, year of manufacturer, VIN number, and bus number is included in your board packet along with a request letter from Dandrian. And a question was posed at the Finance Committee, how many buses are certified to carry students right now? We've got 70 of them.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Support.
All right, any comments? Seeing none. Ms. Heinz, roll call, please.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Ms. May, did you still want to?
Yes.
Make a motion?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we suspend our Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee meetings until we're out of this situation, our current financial situation, and move to having them as board workshops so that all board members can be present.
Do I have support?
Support.
Do you have any comments? All right, seeing none. Ms. Heinz, roll call, vote.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is 150.25, review and approval of curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Ms. Curry?
Thank you. IXL Learning and Scholastic Scope are resources that will be utilized in the middle school to support ELA and science. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of IXL Learning and Scholastic Scope at a cost not to exceed, not to exceed $132,368. This is a savings to our curriculum budget, which was originally being piloted and will be charged to the general fund.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Okay, there we go. Do you have any comments? Yeah. Dr. Weaver?
I just think that if I remember correctly, we were going to spend upwards of $205,000, so this is quite a savings at $132,000. Thank you, that's my comment.
Ms. May, and then Ms. Abney Mitchell.
So typically, I know I know of IXL to be like a supplemental resource, so what would be our main resource for ELA?
Correct. So I'm going to actually have Ms. Grove come up. I think I saw her just a minute ago, and she can speak to that as well and how this will complement it. She already grabbed her.
So we, at the middle school level, our science department and our English departments were in the last, or in a year and a half into a two-year curriculum adoption process at the time that we realized we had a financial situation. As a result, we paused both pilots and stopped any further piloting with, we had just completed HMH for first semester, and then we were going to try a second publisher during our second semester and hopefully propose an adoption plan for both ELA and science at the end of the school year, this previous school year. So we were fortunate when we paused that HMH allowed us to continue using their product free of charge for the remainder of the school year to get our teachers and, most importantly, our students through the school year with their resources. Our next step was to go back to the drawing board and see what we could do to find something for our teachers. What I want to really emphasize is our English teachers do not have old resources, they don't have missing resources, they have no resource. Their resources- Their resource that they were using was an HMH product called Collections, and it has since retired. So it is simply not in existence now. HMH has replaced that with, of course, a new and improved curriculum resource that was one of the, that was actually what we were in the process of piloting during first semester. Second semester would have been with a different company, Amplify. So we do not have any resources for our teachers and students for our middle school ELA programs. Science is in the same situation, but are exploring open resources in partnership with RISA. Both our English and Science teachers have spent a lot of days and hours this summer piecing together their scope and sequence now in light of the changes. So I went back to our English teachers and said, okay, what's Plan B? And these were ultimately the two resources, and these are supplemental resources. So in response to a comment made earlier about Curriculum Council, this is not a curriculum adoption. This is a, this is not even an actual curriculum resource. This is a supplemental resource. So that's why it would not go through the official process of adoption and voting in the Curriculum Council. This is something to help our teachers get through the next two years. And we proposed two years because obviously this year we would need a resource for the fall and during the year while our district gets through this situation. And then our intent is to resume our pilot where we left off our curriculum adoption process with both English and Science. And that would happen in year two, so we would need that second year to complete the adoption process and then in turn come back to the Board with that official proposal for a real curriculum resource.
Dr. Weaver, ask first, then Ms. Ms. May.
Again, the.
Was it a follow-up to what she was answering for you?
Yes.
Okay. She was answering Ms. May's question.
Okay. That's okay. So thank you for the detail. So for me, I would prefer us, because we're saying this was, we're looking at $132,000 versus 205K or no? What was the?
Yes, correct. So these resources would save the district $70,000. This was already budgeted into the general fund. So this would be a savings of $70,000 to go with these resources. And in addition, the reason I added Science onto the proposal in your agenda is because the IXL resource would also be available to our math, social studies, science, and English teachers.
Thank you. So what I would like to say is I would prefer to see us do what is in the best interest of our students versus just trying to piecemeal something together to get through. If we do not have a curriculum, I mean, we've sat here and we've talked back and forth about technology purchases, things of that nature, of $40,000. Now we're talking about a $70,000 savings, to me, to the detriment of our students. So I would like to see you continue forward with the curriculum pilots to discover, to figure out what it is that we need and we make that purchase versus spending $135,000 for a Band-Aid. So that's, that's just me. I appreciate your work, but I want you to know that I want to support having curriculum resources that are going to help our kids to be able to achieve and compete.
Agreed. I think that, and I was hoping Ms. Tackett would be here this evening, but I think that at this point, this is the direction that they'd like to take because they've now done all their scope and sequence and curriculum work around this this summer. So at least for this upcoming year, this would be the resource that, from my understanding from our teachers, they would prefer to move forward with at this point.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you. In light of the comment that was made earlier, where does the Curriculum Council authority end? And you get to make that decision.
Well, we, we like to work collectively, obviously, with our Curriculum Council, which is a makeup of administrators and teachers and the CIA executive directors. So we like to do that work together. But we do usually take an actual vote on curriculum resource adoption. So those contracts that would be, you know, typically our contracts for resource adoption are six years in length. So when we're doing work like that, we would take a vote and our, our Curriculum Council would be brought up to speed along the way of progression by the teachers. So that is typically the role that Curriculum Council plays. And then things like this would be informational, which is why I shared it in the, at the March 19th Curriculum Council meeting. And at the end of the day, the superintendent has final say.
Okay, thank you.
Over all curriculum decisions.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, seeing no further comments. Ms. Heinz, take a roll, please.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. May?
No.
And President Gray?
Yes.
We have six one. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is 151.25, Citizens Comments, Non-Agenda Items. If anybody still needs, would like to speak and hasn't turned in a form yet, please fill it out while others are speaking. Same as before, there will be three minutes per person to speak. The first name here we have is, and I'm sorry with this, if I mispronounced the last name, Shannon Ganchar?
My name is Shannon Ganchar, and I've had the pleasure of being a teacher at Walker Winter for eight years now. Before making a decision about the future of Walker Winter, I'd like to give some insight into what our school has been working on and the direction that we were told we were going in. Two years ago, we were told that our school would begin transitioning to becoming a STEM school for the district. We were told that the vision for our school would be similar to the STEAM Academy in Farmington, which is extremely sought after, so much so that they use a lottery system for students who want to attend the school. As you can imagine, our staff was excited to be part of this amazing opportunity to expand our craft and also to be able to give our students the chance at an education that would be far above the traditional way of learning. We were ready to reimagine what learning could look like for our students. We have now all been trained extensively in project-based learning, which uses hands-on, innovative, and career-based curriculum, along with many other trainings in STEM-based curriculums that use higher-level critical thinking skills. I'm proud to say that because of our training, passion, and hard work, we are now ready to become the district's specialized STEM school. This is appealing to parents, and it will be a fantastic way to grow our district's enrollment numbers. So now I ask you, are you going to take this opportunity to finally give students in this community the type of education that they deeply deserve? Or are you going to sit back and allow the district to take away this beautiful gift that we are ready to give the current and future children of our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have is Bryn Majewski.
My name is Bryn Majewski, and I'm the Instructional Coach at Walker Winter Elementary. After watching the August 4th Board meeting, I wanted to take the time to speak about the instructional framework Walker has been creating and implementing, so that the Board had a full picture of what we have been working towards. Walker staff have fully embraced and started their journey of becoming a STEM-based school over the past two school years and is the only Wayne Westland Elementary School to do this. A highly respected administrator moved to Walker Winter to help bring the STEM framework to life this past school year, and it has truly taken off. I joined the Walker team for the 23-24 school year and can attest to how much time and effort the staff has put into doing what our students need for a successful future. STEM is our future, and deciding to shut down the school that has put in hours of time, training, and piloting seems like we will just be going backwards as this is the way that we could attract more students to our district. The past school year, our staff started implementing STEM-based learning and continued our PD and different STEM opportunities. We've dedicated time to project-based learning PD, which directly connects to STEM learning. We've dedicated time to SAM Labs PD and coaching. SAM Labs is a coding, is a coding platform that aligns with our current science curriculum and can align with any science curriculum. In fact, because our building had implemented SAM Labs in every classroom by this past spring, we had visitors from Wald Lake Community Schools come and watch our teachers in action with SAM's Lab. We have invested a lot of time and money into SAM Labs to ensure every classroom teacher has what they need to implement this successfully. Each grade level participates in STEM challenges put on by myself and our STEM Center teacher. Students are challenged as a grade level to plan, build, and